Good evening, I call to order the February 5th, 2025 regular meeting of the Homeless Commission. Denise, could you please take role?
Chair Bertramlin Strickland.
Here.
Vice Chair Leslie Million.
Here.
Commissioner Linda Cunningham.
Here.
So quorum, yes?
You do have quorum.
Very well.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chance Freeman. Not necessarily anything in particular, I just wanted to give you guys kudos for what you all do. I have been following the progress of this committee for the past year, mainly via YouTube, the uploads, and I wanted to applaud you all for your diligence and effort. The proactiveness of this body is pretty inspiring. You have been faced with unique challenges and obstacles, but time and again, I've seen this team come together and seek lasting solutions in a relatively public setting. I think it's important for Seaside residents to better understand the impactful role of this commission committee, and what it has on our community for the broader vision of this beautiful city. The Good Book says for us to treat our fellow man as our neighbor. I believe what you are all doing is setting that very golden rule into motion, and it truly is a blessing to behold. The unhoused community, as I've heard you called, are indeed our neighbors, deserving of respect, dignity, support, and our friendship. When we offer these with a genuine heart, we foster trust, which I feel this committee and the city earn and continue to earn, and to do so in its proactive approach in these diverse and very personal matters. I want to also thank law enforcement, fire, medical workers, caseworkers, and the local churches for the hard work they do and the love, understanding, and compassion they all put into their work respectfully. You're all truly inspiring, and you're improving this neighborhood of Seaside when you improve the livelihood, spirit, health, and welfare of the residents who need it most. Keep fighting the good fight, and thank you all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, Wes Wise, Modernity County Homeless Union co-president. I'm also part of the lead committee, which is part of the continuing care, and also NAACP political action chair. I mean, has. But one of my big things is human rights, and so people in general, and the way people are treated in all the jurisdictions in Monterey and San Diego County. And I'm always coming to everyone saying, please help me to overturn, you know, like Shelter in Place. You remember Shelter in Place? Because what I'm asking for is to stop the sweeps. And either by complaint or by notice, you know, the people's camps don't actually get that big anymore. It's just been, you know, hey, you can't be here, no posted notice, no legality. I mean, you know, we have Johnson versus Grants Pass. They recently overturned Lawrence Boise, you know, like where's the fruition of service? That's what you should be looking for in the documentation, transparency, and accountability. How many people are out there? How many people are losing their belongings by the city? You know, the city comes and Public Works and the police, you know. Oh, you gotta leave your stuff there, and this ours now, you know, you gotta find new. And that's actually attractive, because you think about how it's been raining, and windy, and really cold, freezing. They actually have, you can do hotel vouchers, you know, and when it's cold enough, the conditions are right. And it's been like that a lot this winter. And I just have fear of people dying, people getting pneumonia, people getting really sick. You know, people are living the quality of life, and the quality of life. And that's, you know, if we're in the business of saving lives, "you can't be here," cannot be a part of the vocabulary of the police or Public Works, there needs to be an address where people can be. These are our residents, if we have this brotherhood, brotherly love, then we have to give people personal space. 400 square feet in the structure, and let them have a place and B, we know who they are, tag, you're it, freeze tag. You're now homeless, you're not homeless. We know who you are, we identify you, and we say we can help you. So let's just wait out the process, that's where Shelter in Place was great. Colonel Durrell was a great success for RVs. We had running water, electricity, dumpsters, and it was just basically self-governed. It was cheap, credit mainly paid, it was $3.50 for a shower, you know, I mean, it's really cheap. It's just permission, is the most expensive part, so help me stop the sweeps.
So next, we're gonna move down to approval of minutes. Approve minutes for the January 23rd, 2025 special meeting. Approve minutes as presented in the agenda packet. Have commissioners had a chance to review the minutes? I might need a moment. I've had a chance to review the minutes.
Can I ask the procedural question since I wasn't there?
Sure.
Do I owe the comments to?
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the Thursday, January 23rd, special meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I see.
Okay. Very well.
Right, just for meeting notes purposes, Commissioner Vice Chair Mugen is abstaining, and she was not present at the last meeting.
Moving on to business items, 7A, election of officers, nominate and vote for chair and vice chair. The recommendations are that the commissioners will share their nominations for voting for the next chair and vice chair of the Seaside Homeless Commission. So I wanted to say I am interested in continuing as chair, but if either of you wish to be chair, I'll withdraw my intention to run for chair and encourage the commission to give unanimous support to whoever wishes to be chair.
I nominate Chair Strickland to be chair again.
Yes, I can.
Very well, so do we vote for me for chair? Or?
So, yes, announce the slated nominees and then ask for a vote on the nominees in whatever order. So that's if you had multiple nominees.
Well, if so, is it nominees, but would it be nominees also for vice chair? Are we gonna?
You do one at a time, so this is for chair first, and then you do the same process for vice chair.
Okay, so I would just say I thank you guys for your support. So we'll open it up to a vote for electing Chair Strickland to continue as chair. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
All right, so now we're gonna move on.
I like you, it's very easy.
So, we're gonna move on to voting for the next vice chair. So, like I said, Leslie, I think you've been doing a great job, and if you wish to continue, I would support that. And at the same time, Commissioner Cunningham, if you wish to be vice chair, I think you would do a great job. So, I'll open up discussion to the both of you.
I would prefer to be a table.
Okay.
You prefer to be what?
A table. Okay.
Instead of a chair. All right, that, it was a bad joke.
Awesome, then I, if it's okay, I would like to continue as vice chair.
Then I will make a motion for Vice Chair Mugen to continue being the vice chair.
I'll second that. So, all in favor of Commissioner Mugen to continue as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Very, very nice.
That was fun, I like those kind of agenda items, those are fun. Okay, 7B, discuss feasibility of changing the name of the Seaside Homeless Commission. The recommendation is that the commission will contemplate changing the name of the Seaside Homeless Commission for clarification of identity and purpose. Okay.
So I'd like to first offer guidance from at least the, from a city standpoint of how something like this would occur. So, the commission itself can discuss and explore, you know, that as their desire. What then would need to happen is I would need to inform the mayor, and then he might request to talk with me further in detail around why this is a desire. Because we don't blindside any of our city leadership when it comes to things like this, and there's an ordinance, I think, that is in place why all the commissions and committees are named as they are. So it would be a significant process to change it through the city and voting through city council and all of that. And so, just something to your, you know, awareness as kind of the process. So I have to, you know, bring it, you know, about the mayor, see kind of what his, you know, how he feels about it, and then from there, should, it might be a possibility, then it would have to go to the city manager, who would then place it on the agenda for a future city council meeting to vote on.
So our job would be to, to recommend a new name?
Yes, certainly, right, to me, you know, after y'all kind of, you know, make a motion and decide, and then, and the motion essentially would say, we'd like to have city staff advocate for this name change to city leadership, and then we'll go for it.
I added the, asked to have this planned on the agenda because it was suggested at a previous meeting that our branding might be, might not be, might be unattractive. But I'm not sure if we can even cost justify this. I mean, the time from the city, the motions, the whatever the council has to do, the time of the mayor, I just don't know if it's.
Takes an ordinance, right, it's quite a few steps in a process.
I mean, let's we come up with a killer name, and the best I could come up with was HIC, the Housing Improvement Commission.
That's good.
But we're not really improving housing, we're, that's not, I mean, we don't have resources, we don't have funding, we're not building experts, we're not getting apartments built, we're not getting shelters built. That, I think that's beyond our, maybe we need to look at our, go back to our mission and look at our mission name, but, thank you for clarifying, Derek, what all entails to, if we were to go with a different name. But I, maybe we should bounce some names around, we'll find a name that we really love, and we'll say, yeah, it's worth it. We'll just come back to it.
Yeah, I think it's worth giving it a couple of minutes to think about some other names. I think it was in the conversation with the interim city manager where this came up, and I think he was, I mean, not advocating, but suggesting that that could be part of the problem, right? So, so I think it's worth a couple of minutes. And I think what we do is we advocate for solutions, so I'm wondering if we could kind of build that into our naming, like, I don't know where it goes.
You want, you want to hear what I came up with?
Yeah.
I came up with the Homelessness Solutions and Advocacy Commission. And that, my thought was, it was better to come up with a name that describes more what we do.
Right.
And that, I actually had had that, I think I had that idea maybe like around last month or two months ago, but it was still stuck in my head, so.
So it's got advocacy and solutions, and I think that, so say it again?
Homelessness Solutions and Advocacy Commission.
I like that, actually. I don't know, I wonder what you think.
HSE.
What's it called?
The HSE, that's not what's.
HSE?
Or you could do HESC, and say Homelessness Advocacy and Solution Commission, and just switch the advocacy.
Let's, let's switch that.
But in that way, HESC is a little bit.
Yes, let's switch it, advocacy.
Then HSE.
So say it again, homeless.
Hang on, I gotta rewrite.
Homelessness, homeless.
No, not, it's not home, I almost wrote Homelessness Advocacy Commission, and commission, so just give me one sec, I got this. Okay, Homelessness Advocacy and Solutions Commission.
Yeah, I don't know if I care what time you know where it's going.
That's right.
I like, I think, I think solutions and advocacy.
People like acronyms and things, though, so I was just speaking to.
I think solutions and advocacy should be in there, because that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, so yeah, I like Homelessness Advocacy and Solutions Commission.
Yeah, they were gonna call it Operation Iraq Liberty until they figured out that that acronym was oil, and that probably didn't have a good.
That's interesting. So wait, say it again, Ben?
Homelessness Advocacy and Solutions Commission.
So the only thing that I worry about is homelessness advocacy, it's almost like, are we advocating for homelessness, that's what we're doing?
So we could just switch it back to Homelessness Solutions and Advocacy Commission, and just not use the acronym.
I, I think that feels better to me.
I, I mean, it does roll off a ton better. It does roll off a ton.
I see what you're saying, and again, it's for clarification of purpose, right, and so, it makes sense.
I'm trying to find our mission statement.
I think I talked about advocacy.
Do you want to pull up the work plan?
Yeah, I thought, oh my gosh, I think I went through this dumb, all this paperwork I have, I think I tossed it out.
No, I'll pull.
With my pen.
I know I, I know I have it somewhere, I just have to find it.
Just a ton of stuff I'm carrying. And why do I ever throw anything in the recycle bin? Because I, you know, we're trying to, you know, you look, if we. When I think about what we've accomplished, we got some money to some groups to support them at the holidays. And we've been able to, two times, have a food grant program. And in my mind, none of that has to do with housing, or.
That what, I'm sorry?
Well, that's not housing. It's feeding people who are hungry, and then making, you know, getting these, you know, some holiday funding to some organizations.
Well, it's, so in a mission, I'd say it supports what those affected by homeless, right? And so it's to support them, and one of the, one of the areas or what's identified as it comes to those who are homeless is that if they don't have the pieces, like meeting basic needs, and as we talked, a big portion about hygiene services and those, right? Trying to then even engage to get to the housing portion, you know, presents a challenge. If you're hungry, if you're, whatever it is, how do you, you know, have the energy or capacity to necessarily, you know, engage in programs and all of the things that that might require? So I think it's under the purview of supporting those who are unhoused. It's not necessarily providing direct housing, but then again, the commission in and of itself has to decide, like, is that even a possibility, right? You know, the commission is more of an advisory board, right? It's not a developer, right, in a sense, like it's out there and finding locations and wanting to build housing, and has the capacity necessary to do that, so.
And I do know that we support housing.
Right, yeah, definitely, and I think in this, in the idea of the name change and whatnot, it kind of does speak a little bit to addressing both of those aspects of the fact that we know we're advisory or advocacy group, you know, but we also do offer some supports to those who are, you know, on, or solutions is under what we have the capacity to do.
Well, it sounds like we may be getting some additional people on our commission, and I am considering making a motion that we move this to a future agenda item, and if we have more people, then we can have more people's input, the new people. If we're getting new people, which it almost sounds like we might be, then they can feel like they participated in this process, which was actually the first thing that was done when I joined the commission, was the name.
You've been on the commission since 2017, since the start?
I, I think it was, I think there was a temporary, some kind of temporary group, and then this was like when they like made it an ongoing thing, so yeah, but.
So can I counter that just a little bit?
Sure.
I think it's fine if you don't want to settle on a name, or you pitch a name, but I think what we should recommend is that we get the exploration started about how does this actually happen? I think it might still be worth having the conversations, that hey, they want to change the name, they're gonna, they want to lean into, they get a whole body or a fuller body, but that, what is that process? And is he a piece of whole, like, would they even consider?
Sure, and I did a, just a informal inquiry with our city clerk earlier today, so I would know at least how to provide some initial guidance for the process. And so what I can do is go back, get that information in a little bit more kind of detailed way, and find out, like, is, can I at least do a, an interest outreach, you know, from, you know, to the city leadership to say if they even be open to something like this, just to, just to help, you know, make that decision, like, do we pursue this or not, right?
And in the notes, can we, Doc, can we just make a note that we liked, well, two of us, I don't know, we have a site to decide this new name, so we just don't lose the, what we discussed, that's all.
I was gonna say, should we have a vote that we vote on in an intent to change the name of the commission, to put more weight behind it?
So, no, I mean, you'd make the motion if it's gonna get moved to another meeting or not, if you're not gonna decide on, you know, wanting to put anything forward today. You do need to open up for a public comment, of course. But if the decision is, you want me to go back, you know, do some further, you know, kind of exploring of the process, and the potential interest from, you know, the city leadership, that's what the motion would speak to then.
Very well, so do I have a motion?
Do you have a comment first?
Oh, I thought it was a public comment after the motion.
You can make the motion then, open it up to public comment, yeah.
I can't figure out the wording of the motion, otherwise I'd make the motion.
So is it just, would it be a motion to move this, the discussion of the feasibility of changing the name to a future meeting?
As well as?
An intent to?
As well as an intent to have city staff further explore with city, if, if.
This is a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that agenda item B, discussing the feasibility of the name change of the Seaside Homeless Commission, be moved to a future meeting and city staff notified for the purposes of the feasibility of changing the name of the Seaside Homeless Commission.
I second.
Very well, at this time, I'll open it up for public comment.
With that motion, does the commission have a specified future meeting that they'd like to move this item to? Hopefully by next meeting.
How about next meeting?
We move it to March, if we hope that means.
Sure, it's a month away too, at least I can do my best to try to see what I can discover.
Okay, and if we don't, we could move it to April, but decide then.
You can always decide to, right, so for now, it's the, you know, in the motion, we're admitting it to add that we want, that next month's meeting, March's meeting will be when we'll discuss this item.
Okay, very well, so I'll amend the motion that agenda item B be revisited at our March regular meeting. Do I have to have a second on that? Very well, so all in favor of tabling agenda item B to our March meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to business item C, discuss development of collaborative partnership with City of Seaside Neighborhood Improvement Commission for consideration of seeking funding support of future Seaside Homeless Commission work plan project. Recommendation is for commissioners to contemplate engaging with the Seaside Neighborhood Improvement Commission in a dual collaborative meeting to explore building a partnership to work together in the future in service of the needs of Seaside's most vulnerable community members. So, go ahead, Derek.
So I want to bring the commissioners' awareness to, in their packet, I did provide the letter after the minutes from their, from the liaison for the Neighborhood Improvement Commission that gave, and I had passed this along to you all a while back, but just so you have it again, discussing their, you know, guidelines, their, you know, for submitting, and so, and I also have it up on the screen.
Is this the same letter that was sent out maybe several months ago?
Yes.
Okay.
I do have to say I planned on attending the NIC on Tuesday. Weather was bad, so I was gonna dial in, but it was canceled. Because it asks for your ideas to be submitted before February 28th. And we're, you know, if we were gonna pitch them like we did last year, anyways, I tried to listen out on the meeting, they didn't have one, that's all, I'm not, one, I don't know if we can get a submission by the end of the month, we'd probably have to have another meeting, and.
I think what we did best, right, is we kind of assigned a group or a person to pitch out a name, but I think we can talk about what those, what that outline should look like, and what we're agreeing to, to be able to submit something by.
Yes, so in the, in the letter, just to help, so that, you know, help with your discussion. So, any project ideas need to be submitted, and they can be submitted by email to their staff liaison, which I can do, Dan Muess, and that would need to be submitted by February 28th. But if you look in the guidelines for project submissions, you know, the bullet point, the second to last bullet point says, it doesn't need to be fully developed ideas at this point, they just want something, you know, that, you know, to know, okay, what are you potentially going to be proposing? And then it says, and so then they can review them at their March 1st, 2025 retreat.
So if it's not a fully developed idea, could it just be, is it just a concept of what they're interested in?
Yeah.
Can we email them right now to the city, or to the NIC liaison, and then?
I'm sorry?
Could we try to email now as a group and just send it out? And then go on that email? It doesn't say it can't be an email, right?
No, you would email, it says project ideas should be sent by email.
Yeah, this is what we should talk about in the chat, just to, because I don't think it has to be that complicated.
Yeah, I mean, it, at a minimum, it could be a few sentences, but I mean, we could do a decent-sized paragraph explaining what our intent is, it's not, we don't have to do a PowerPoint presentation at this point or anything in that depth, so.
And I want to ask about retreats, definition of retreat, what does that mean?
I'm not sure, it's related to it, I see.
When the NIC, when they talked about this retreat, they talked, I think they're meeting at the Old and Wyer Center.
So is it like a private meeting, is the definition of a retreat?
No, and, and with the whole collaborative meeting idea that I know was explored, that is an opportunity to be able to have a collaborative-type engagement at that retreat.
I don't know, I don't know what that means, does that mean more than one of us could attend it?
I would probably say you'd want a representative.
Just one representative?
Yeah, right, so to, again, not have it, if it's a joint meeting, then we would have to put it on an agenda, right? So that it is at least publicized.
Right, right. Why don't we, I, 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 well, oh, I'm sorry, I, I don't see, says to discuss development of a collaborative partnership with the NIC, Neighborhood Improvement Commission, for consideration of seeking funding support for future Seaside Homeless Commission work. So is making this pitch for something, is that our collaborative partnership?
Yeah, because ultimately, again, right, it's about collaborating with the NIC as it relates to putting forth the proposal that hopefully they'll approve and. as it relates to putting forth the proposal that hopefully they'll approve and seek to fund, right?
I didn't know if it's gonna have, ask, say, could we have two or three meetings a year? Joint meetings to collaborate together to improve the city by doing things that just happen to help homeless people. I didn't, I wasn't quite sure if I would, if what we were going over.
Yeah, well, in this case, because of the deadline, right, in February, before we hit March, because this will be before our March meeting, I wanted to make sure at least I had this as a primary, you know, item. Because we gotta put forth the proposal if you want to put something forth at all. And so I just wanted to make sure this was our priority. We can discuss, I think, that idea, especially now, that's expanding of wanting to have multiple meetings in a year. Right, that's expanding upon the initial idea of just having one joint meeting. And so I think right now, my ideal is really just about trying to stick to this deadline.
So is that having one joint meeting with the NIC before this deadline or submit what, some kind of proposal?
So we can't, we won't be able to meet with them before February twenty eighth.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're gonna submit to them a project idea?
Yeah.
And their project guidelines are to
Should be.
support the NIC? That we will send it by email, fully or not required, we encourage all submissions to have a connection to the criteria below.
It's, it says neighborhood, and it's further down in the documents, it says Neighborhood Improvement Commission objectives.
It says objectives, the Municipal Code Section twenty four, or two dot twenty four dot zero four zero C below. Where is that below?
I think that's this objectives part.
It's the objectives that's below, thank you, the Neighborhood Improvement Commission.
I'm just wondering, they, I didn't know if we were gonna try again for, I think, clean people, make Seaside more beautiful? And that, do we wanna try again to get funding for a refresh start? Or do we wanna attempt something else? And if it was something else, I'm not sure what that something else would be.
I think we want to go for something else.
Okay.
And I think, it's a couple of things that popped up, I think the listing sessions were lockers and charging stations. Those feel like things that should be fairly easy to get to the city and probably cost a decent amount of money. I don't know if it aligns for objectives, I would hope that it does. They feel pretty, pretty subjective to me, but I think we could pitch a plan that, I don't know, that's just an idea, I don't know if there's other ideas.
That, that's the same idea.
So here's the work plan. Section D here, with some of the ideas that you all had for supports.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we put out a quick email and say, here's our idea? And I think, I don't know if we need to include cost or maybe like a range of cost? Or expected range, or maybe up to a certain amount? Because I know last year, they had, they had to have the staff go back and look and really develop costs for certain things. And that's, that's gonna take different amount of time, so maybe they put in a range and just say, here's what we're thinking. That looks for you guys.
Sure.
And Ellie?
I, I'm trying to get into the mind of the NIC. And trying, trying to, you know, find in that thin diagram how we can pitch something that would clearly fall into these guidelines or objectives. And maybe I'm just overthinking it, like, they're gonna, what do people need lockers for? Or these are people who don't have a home, that they close the door and lock, okay? Off the list. And maybe I'm being, I'm being judgmental, I know I'm being judgmental, I'm just, that's what's going on in my mind of.
Good, I get it. But if you don't try?
I, I would like to pitch the city council to pitch the homeless commission some of the TOPE money, because the transitory occupancy is what makes housing even tighter, leading to more homelessness. To me, that's a direct line, but that, I'm not sure how to go about that, and that's not what the objective is for today. You know, where would lockers go? How would people get there? How big are these lockers? Are they like your high school locker, is it like a little locker? Or are they like a, one point we had bike, where you could lock your bike up in the parking lot. I don't know if anybody's been here long enough, when we used to have those before they put the solar in. And I don't know if they were ever used, I, I don't.
Well, I think we don't have to have all these.
Right, right, right.
At least we can get an idea, you get it on the rest.
Hardly was thinking, oh, is there a way to, I bought these really cool solar charge, battery charge, I mean, they're like little chargers that you charge up solar and then you plug your cellphone into. And I, they were like eleven bucks each, I bought them for everybody for Christmas, so I was like, everybody has to have one of these. I was like, well, instead of like a charging station, would there be a way to have a purchase, you know, a hundred of these? And hand them out to our most vulnerable people? But would that fall into any of this improvement? And I can't see it, so I, I'll support anything you guys come up with. I'm clearly, I'm not overthinking, I feel like I've got tunnel vision on how to meet these objectives, and I might, just because we've tried with them and feel like the little mouse that got electrocuted touching that button.
Well, it also says batteries, right? I think, I think we saw, so that would make a solar kind of situation too. So I don't, again, I don't think we have all the answers, I think what we should do is we should pitch our work plan. We should pitch that these are two things that we'd like to consider, I think it goes in there.
So just tell them, you know, public charging sta-, public phone charging stations?
Whatever is in our plan.
Smart, could we just say smart device charging stations? Because I mean, maybe they want to charge their laptop or tablet or something.
But this wouldn't be a bicycle?
No.
Or would it? A lot of people, that's their own motor consultation?
Wait, like an electric bike?
Yeah.
Oh.
But I don't know, I, I, I was just kind of.
Where do people charge electric bikes?
I think anywhere they can find a plug.
You know kind of plugs they use?
No, I do not, I'm assuming it's just a standard plug, but I could go to the bike shop next to, place we use.
So I think at this point, all they need to do is write it on their list, if they're actually willing to consider.
So a device charging station?
Device charging station, and we could just leave it vague for now, and then when we get more specific and present something more in-depth with them, we could say charging phones or tablets or motorized electric bikes.
Okay, and you see, what, like these on Broadway and Fremont, Del Monte, the three main streets in Seaside, or?
I don't mean, no, not either.
Um, but it, it would probably be public, publicly owned spaces by the city, right, Derek? Okay, so we would mention that in the email, that these would be in the publicly owned spaces, owned by City of Seaside.
Can we bring up an email or a word up? Is that possible to do that now?
My only other thought was pitching a price, because we don't know how much lockers or charging stations cost, the total costs of it all. So my pitch, I was gonna say a price range, ten to fifteen thousand dollars worth was the tag I was gonna put in there. Because I figured that that seems like a reasonable range that they, of a total cost that they might approve. But I was gonna open it up to the both of you, if you could come up with a different price range. If you think we could put a bigger number in there, like fifteen to twenty thousand worth. I wanted to get your thoughts on that price range.
Yeah, I think I saw something just flushed on the screen that were lockers, somebody had them up, I don't know what they cost.
I was gonna try to get on the wifi and Google, just to get a rough idea.
I can, I can pull up the internet.
Oh, okay, I have no idea what.
I kind of already was thinking.
How the charging station looks like or what it would cost.
So, like.
I mean, somebody else on the planet had to put in public, yeah, cell phone charging stations.
Like this one has like ten, ten slots. This is just about five hundred, this has ten slots.
Okay.
So we're talking about lockers for like personal documents?
I can look up that too, I was just laying up cell phone charging.
That's a cell phone charging?
This is a cell phone charging. This is a cell phone charging device thing, it's got ten slots in it, as you can see. And this is the kind of cord, which is, gives you all three type options, which is good, you can charge different types of places, right?
What you do is you lock your phone inside.
Yeah, and so it has.
And that way, you don't have to just stand there with your phone, you can plug your phone in, lock it in, charge it, go eat, come out and open your locker and get your phone out.
Okay.
So it'd be like the bus stop locker, or where you put your ice skates, you know, when you went to ice camp?
Yeah.
Put your shoes in, or?
Cool.
I love that idea, great, good job on getting that brought up on the, the big screen, Derek, appreciate it.
Yeah, and it looks compact, this is what it looks like in terms of a size next to a screen or something, so doesn't look like it would take up a lot of space.
So it looks like that one could do eight phones and like two tablets or laptops?
Yeah.
Okay. But there was also a discussion of light lockers for personal documents, like birds' egg and social security. I mean, it could, we could do both, I mean.
Yeah, I could, I don't know if it's.
This was listed, just when I Googled, this was listed, that was listed at four ninety-five oh six. And then.
Well, this is, we can, I think we can round that up to five hundred.
Five hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
And just, you know, it's a B, it's a A for a request, right? It's a cost-friendly, I would say, you know, especially you could get a couple, you know, a couple, a few of them. Depending on what we possibly could get funded.
Right, okay.
So that's that, do you want me to explore?
If there's, yeah, lockers, I don't know.
I'm not sure what people would be looking for in the way of a locker. I mean, are you looking, you know, are you looking?
I think what we heard was about documents, right, like there's no place to hold and house their documents. Taking them with them, they get destroyed, wet, lost. So I think that's.
And that's where maybe I wondered if there, if there was a way without the city, that people could bring their documents and be scanned. And then it's not a physical storage, it's a digital storage, but then who takes the ownership, the responsibility, not to get hap-, you know, then it gets, you know, it gets bigger. I don't know, it's hard, because.
Like, you can't have the physical, they like to know that they're physical things are still.
Yeah, absolutely, I've got my go list of all the papers I'm supposed to be getting together that I sent to all these people and I have, yeah, to get some papers together. But I have a list of what I would put together, if I had time to put it together, which hopefully I'll, never have to leave, but home points would be ready ahead of time.
This one, five sixty-five, five, nine, let's see, share.
Okay. That's what I was thinking about lockers, something like that, like, they're like the school lockers, you know, we had growing up.
I could go to a park, like you could rent a locker for the day, put your valuables in the locker, kind of thing.
Yeah, photo albums, or, you know, something that you can't always carry around with you, but maybe a little bigger.
How much are those?
And this, so this is, it's like nine, yeah, nine, five sixty-five, it's a.
That's, that's a good number.
Okay.
It was this one here, five sixty-five.
Okay. Derek, I had a question, can you or anyone tell me what the estimated count of currently unhoused members in the City of Seaside is? How many in total do we have in Seaside, any of us know of?
I have to find out, who's, it's, it fluctuates, right? As folks are moving around the county per their needs and services and whatnot. I do recall when we had the officer speak once, he did say there's like a kind of dedicated amount that are just tucked away in different areas, I'm sorry, I don't recall the number off the top of my head that he mentioned.
I tried to say thirty, I would.
Well, you can round up and say twenty, yeah, about thirty to forty, yeah, so.
Really, I, I don't, I never see, I mean, there's a handful I see, but.
Okay, the lockers are six hundred.
For nine.
For nine lockers?
Yeah, if we go.
Not everybody's gonna want a locker, so I don't think we have to have a locker for everybody.
Why don't you maybe just choose four or five of them, right, to do four or five?
I, I was thinking about five, so that's forty-five lockers. And I got three thousand, just rough estimate ballpark, for the forty-five lockers. And then, so my question was, with the charging stations? Three thousand, yep. So for the charging stations, that, those were like little lockers that you could charge your smart devices, right? And those were five hundred each?
Yep.
So about how many of those?
Those were, yeah, five hundred.
Right, and about how many of those would we consider?
You said five of those is twenty-five hundred dollars, right?
Yep.
And so that's fifty-five hundred dollars, so.
Okay, do we?
Right, this is a quick little, this is a quick little search that I just did, right? I might, you know, as per city staff, it's always my duty to do further digging and see if I can find things cheaper. But this gives us at least a baseline, right, to make our submission, you know? And then go formalize it as we decide, oh, we, I was able to find the same concept for maybe slightly cheaper, or who knows, right? But this is kind of our baseline to go with.
I did have one other question, so can we look up bike charging stations? Or do these lockers able to do that at all, or no?
Probably not.
No, I don't think so. My retort to that is, do we think there's a significant level of folks using e-bikes? That, that for unhoused at least, right, you know, that
Maybe not.
We could justify that.
May, maybe not, but that's why I was thinking maybe getting at least one of these, maybe two, depending on how much they are. Like, not a lot, but just that we have, have at least one.
Well, we don't even know what it takes to charge one of those bikes, might just take a plug.
Yeah, that's true.
And then they run about twenty-five bucks at home, people.
But do, do we have any public outlets anywhere that people can use?
That, that's the, that's the challenge, because there are places that could lock those up because they, people hang around charging their phone.
So there's one on Amazon, it's a twelve-slot cellphone charging station, and that was three hundred and thirty-two.
Oh, excellent, so, I mean, there's options, where you can.
There's options, I figured it was just a matter of researching, but this was quick, you know, one of those.
Do we want to just write a quick email, or no?
Sure.
That works.
I'm in support of that.
And do we want to put, like, an range of five thousand, two thousand dollars?
Sure.
I think that's reasonable.
So I, I think it does, but we should say this, this, this cost baseline is based on just the cost of the materials themselves, but not any additional costs for implementing them?
Installing.
Or installing or implementing. Or in, installing or implementing. Any, any other costs associated with uh getting those into the infrastructure are not included in these baseline costs.
So what do you, how would you?
So, dear N I C?
To the members of the Neighborhood Improvement Commission?
Dear N I C. Dear N I C.
Dear Nick. You broke my heart.
Uh, let's see.
Multiple times.
Times, but I just can't quit you. We just can't quit the Nick.
About two ideas for.
It's the money to cut the deep fog.
If we didn't hear you know work plan?
Uh, yes, and then.
Okay, so are you there? Do you want your phone? Are you taking?
Sure, I'm, yeah.
Okay, so where, where do we start? Dear?
Student members of the N I C.
Okay, so then, the Seaside Homeless Commission would like to put forth the following ideas for inclusion in your twenty-five, twenty-six annual work plan?
The following proposal.
Our work plans?
Commission.
Or their work plan?
Yeah.
Project, so they call them projects, so following projects. Okay, the Seaside Homeless Commission would like to put forth the following project proposal.
And, and then Derek, do you have another window that shows uh our work plan where it talked about the uh lockers and the char, uh charging stations?
I was coming first.
Yeah.
It says investigate options to provide additional services to unhoused to include but not limited to. So it doesn't give much expansion. It's just a bullet, it's kind of a, just a.
I think it's all they have to do, right?
A section topic, right. So, we'd like to put a proposal.
Project proposal.
Uh, project proposal. Okay, so the Seaside Homeless Commission would like to put forth the following project proposal advocating for options to provide additional service to the unhoused to include but not limited to. Cause that's the section heading in the work plan.
Oh, but I think we have to limit our pitch. I think we have to be pretty concrete. I don't think we should say too complete and.
We can just say too included, and not.
Yeah. What address was the word? Like the two bullets. Um.
I don't use.
Charging stations, and then devices, and then lockers, yeah, yeah.
Devices for storage of personal items, and phone charging station.
Yeah, sorry, we weren't there, that's what you're.
So that's more.
That's what we wanted to say. Um, Ben, how do you explain about cost to my way of including?
Uh, maybe say, uh, we would estimate a, a price range of at least.
Between, I would say between five thousand dollars and ten thousand dollars?
Between five thousand dollars and ten thousand dollars, um, not including any additional costs for incorporation.
Implementation.
Implementation.
Can you say somehow that it, that was to prevent, um, whatever, that what was to, in order to clean up the city of Seaside, the lockers could be used to clean up the city. Like it.
Well, it's.
I, I mean, I'm trying, I was, I'm just trying to find stuff in here because I just got that bad response from the last two times that they're just like.
Do you wanna just?
We, we could, uh, I mean, it, it says, uh, in the Neighborhood Improvement Commission's letter, it talks about make recommendations to the city council on ways to improve the appearance of the city and elicit voluntary cooperation to beautify and minimize, minimize vandalism in the city. Uh, we could offer, could we say something in the email that we could paint the lockers, like artists could paint the lockers, they've, they've painted.
We could work with the art commission, like they, with the, because they're the ones that have been wrapping the, um, so we could say what, you know, to work with the Seaside Art Commission
Art.
to wrap the, the lockers, like the wrapping of the boxes around town, the electrical boxes around town.
Okay.
And some of them are really cool. I really love the one with the jellyfish over by the, was it the seven eleven on the corner, the one with the jellyfish?
What, what do you mean wrapping? Like, is that painting it, like a wrap around?
It's, 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 um, it's a wrap, like they would put on the car, so if somebody vandalizes it, they can just peel it off and stick it back on and print a new one and stick it back on again. Those aren't painted, painting, the old fashioned way. They had the art printed and then they, like, they're like stickers, on all those boxes.
Oh, okay.
And then that way, if there's any vandalism, you know, you can just take it off and put a fresh one on and it's.
Perfect.
And then the art commission understands that process.
I, I think that would help sell it better too, if, if we offer to have the art, uh, uh, the, work with, we'd like to work with the art commission.
Collaborate.
Collaborate with the art, what's the name of the art commission?
I think it's the Seaside Art and Historicals. Did they combine the art commission and the historical commission?
Yes, Art and History.
Art and History Commission.
Art and History Commission.
And, and now, the wraps were funded by Nick. That was part of the work last year, was the wraps.
Uh, we would wish to collaborate with the Art and History Commission to provide the lockers, um, with the artistic wraps as they have done, um, on previous Seaside projects for beautification.
There's gotta be a way to help us with that.
Gotta be a way to say that more so.
Okay.
First, I want to make sure I have the first portion correct, and so.
What are you trying to do, fit into one of their objectives?
Fit into one of their objectives, yeah. Work, work with service close civic organizations as appropriate to help clean up the city and to promote and implement programs which help change the whole.
I don't know if we need to tie that in, like, I don't know if we should tie that in, honestly.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's, I think if we isolate one, then purchase them, calling it depression, and not depression entirely, why do you think this is gonna do us?
Right, that's a good point.
So, I don't understand. I think their objectives are really broad.
And, and honestly, I, I do think that if we work with the Art and History Commission on the lockers, that gives beautification purposes to the city. It's not gonna be like these brown, unattractive.
Yeah.
You know, or gray, unattractive lockers like.
I think we should say that, you're saying that, right?
Yeah.
Should say what?
Are they planned to work with? Yeah.
Is, is that in there, Derek, in the email?
Not yet, but I'm going to put that in there.
Okay.
So, um, can we seek to collaborate with Art and History Commission to support decoration of the lockers? Is there anything else related to that?
Should we say anything about the, the wraps, the anti vandalism wraps?
Oh, well, I think he covered it, that they should, I would hope they remembered they funded the, I mean, I remember that they funded the wraps on that, on that.
Okay.
That, you know, and the reason why they did wraps was to make it easier to keep them fresher.
Okay.
So you need something, I mean, why I don't wanna call it an objective, I mean, it ends it by saying we believe that, means this project would, um, support the objectives of the N I C?
No, I don't, we should say that, cause that, I, I don't.
You want to say it?
I thought, I think your point was, well, maybe.
Yeah, well, you know, that was, I might, I might, you know, it's.
I think we can say this would, um, improve, um, Seaside, you know, this would be in, um, benefit to the residents of Seaside and would, um.
Oh, yeah, all residents of Seaside.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
This would be a benefit to all the residents of Seaside.
Yeah, period. That, that works.
Okay, Dan, who finds that?
Pickleball courts, but. I missed it at the last city council meeting, if you weren't there for the pickleball court, uh, conversation.
Just city council tomorrow? Be back tomorrow.
I think it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the first and third Thursday.
Right.
And then, at, at, at the close of the, the email, should we say thank you, uh, thank you for this, this opportunity, uh, for commissions? Sincerely, the Seaside Homeless Commission?
That's a little touchy.
Now that, I should be more optimistic, though. We just keep trying till we get something. Answer's always known unless you ask. And we're gonna get submitted just in an instant time.
And then, I'm sorry, you just said the Seaside Homeless Commission appreciates this opportunity, was there anything else?
Oh, no, well, it, well, I, I was, I was saying, uh, it ended sincerely, the Seaside Homeless Commission, um, not I wouldn't say the Seaside Homeless Commission appreciates this opportunity, I would say thank you for this opportunity, because we'd be repeating Seaside Homeless Commission twice.
So you would say thank you for this opportunity, the Seaside Homeless Committee?
Some.
Commission, are we, the commission, are we committed, what are we?
Or respectfully, the Seaside Homeless Commission. How, how did they, in their thing? Thank you, the Neighborhood Improvement Commission. We'll just, we'll just copy that format. Thank you, the Seaside Homeless Commission.
Instead of for this opportunity?
Oh, no, actually, thank you for this opportunity, respectfully, the Seaside Homeless Commission. Okay, um, can I just read it out loud?
You may.
Uh, Seaside Homeless Commission proposal to N I C. To the members of the N I C, the Seaside Homeless Commission would like to put forth the following project proposal advocating for options to provide additional services to the unhoused in Seaside for improvement of quality of life and improvement to city health and beauty. The project proposal is to include the purchase of lockers for storage of personal items, vital records, et cetera, and the purchase of phone charging stations. We seek to collaborate with Art and History Commission to support decoration of the lockers. We believe this project will benefit all community members in Seaside. Thank you for this opportunity, respectfully, the Seaside Homeless Commission. Um, I just wouldn't have the exclamation point at the bottom. Thank you for this opportunity, I would just have a period.
So, did y'all wanna put any uh, reference to an amount, a little?
Um, I, I, I think maybe we should, uh, is that what we agreed to?
Yeah, I think we should too.
Um, uh, we.
We anticipate a range.
Uh, so after charging stations, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We anticipate a range of five thousand to ten thousand dollars, a range of.
How much?
Five to ten thousand, that's good.
And I think we should say device charging stations and not home?
I agree.
Yeah, then finish that, good.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
So just five to.
Yep.
And then one sentence up at the end of the sentence where it says, and to purchase and the purchase of phone charging stations, we're suggesting it say the purchase of device charging stations? This top one.
It's not, it says phone in the work plan, I can change it to device.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, we were, we'll have to update the work.
Work plan, yeah, update the work plan.
And then I have a, a.
I will mention that.
Suggestion to the change at the first, at the top of the sentence, it says, the Seaside Homeless Commission would like to put forth the following project proposal. We are putting forth the, we're not liking to put forth. We are putting forth a project proposal, so I think we can get rid of the would like to put forth the following and just say the Seaside, um, Homeless Commission's project proposal, oh, now, now it's just, it just seems like we're saying we're putting forth a project proposal, we would like to put forth a project proposal when we are putting forth, we would like, you know, we, we, the Seaside Homeless Commission is putting forth is putting forth the following.
Is putting forth, that's fine.
You know what we need? We need to, um, highlight this and ask AI to fix this paragraph. Why are we struggling, when we can have all of AI fix it?
It's kind of.
It's just, we're not liking to, we are actually putting.
This putting forth is uncivil and direct language.
Opt. Ever came or.
And do we even have to go into the rest of that sentence? Can we just say the Seaside Homeless Commission is putting forth the following project proposal? Period. The proposal is to include the purchase of because below we say would benefit everyone, all members of Seaside.
So you're, you're, um, and maybe if you highlight it and you can just say copy, don't say cut in case too much comes out. So you're saying it would say the Seaside Homeless Commission is putting forth the following project proposal, period.
Right.
The project proposal is to include the purchase.
So you would take that out, right, and then period there? And then just go into that final.
Remember, Derek, nobody likes to write, everybody loves to edit. It, it, you, you follow that your whole life, you'll never get rid of that one. I've had it since the eighties.
Okay, just given from the experiences you've had, I think that it's just going to lessen the
Sure.
The no. Does that make sense?
Okay, so I'm gonna take it all. I'm sure I'm getting the best way.
Delete, delete.
It's okay.
I think it's something, the project is.
How about the project proposal includes the following? Or we already said it, before the following, the proposal, period.
Um.
This proposal includes.
Yeah, it's like we have project proposal twice in a row.
Yeah, so just, what, the, the Seaside Homeless Commission is putting forth the following and maybe say, and put a colon there, um, and then say, our project proposal is. So, colon, and then lowercase the, 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 the T on the or, but we wanna change that to our, maybe, like, our project proposal is.
Okay, I'm with, I'm with it on our project proposal is to yeah, it doesn't need to, our, our proposal is to purchase, it doesn't need to include the purchase, or is that, I don't know, maybe feels like such a formal sentence, I don't know how to write. Project proposal is to include the purchase of lockers.
How about is the purchase, right, I agree. To include doesn't need to be good.
Is the purchase. Our project proposal is the purchase of. Is the purchase of lockers for storage items like.
You, you editing if you want.
In a craving, we got all the.
I know.
Um, okay, but, so it's for the storage of personal items, vital records, et cetera. I kinda wanna change et cetera to something else. Personal items, vital records.
How about just give it a personal items, common record, that covers pretty much the M I C.
Um, I, I, I would probably put one more word, um, a word for important things. What's one word for very important things?
Are you asking Siri?
No, I'm, I'm asking at, any of us. So for the storage of, uh, personal items, vital records.
Isn't that, doesn't, what else?
Like medication, I mean.
Wasn't that personal items?
I guess it is personal. For the storage of personal items.
And vital records.
And vital records, so we'll just change the comma between the two to an and.
Comma, and the participative.
So there has to be another comma behind the word "and," the second "and," so vital records, comma, and, comma. It's the Oxford comma. I learned about this recently.
Let me take this one out.
No, 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 keep that, no, keep, keep that comma, and then that, that word "and" right after it, the comma goes right there, yep. It's "and," comma, the purchase of device charging stations. I was working on a final project at CSU MB and my, my partner was telling me about the Oxford comma. She's like, "Ben, it has to, you need to put a comma here." And I hadn't done it for years, but now I, I, I get, I get it now, so.
I think it looks beautiful. I think we should stop editing.
I think you guys also need to add like a part of the criteria, because they're, they are asking, "We encourage all submissions that have a connection to the criteria below." And I don't see anything on that proposal about how it would benefit the neighborhood or improve the neighborhood.
Um, oh, so in the sentence where we say, "We seek to work with Art and History Commission to support the decoration of lockers," comma, uh, which would, uh, beautify the city of Seaside. We could say that much. It would beautify the city of Seaside, because it talks about beautifying, beautifying things a lot in there.
There's a lot of cleanup, so you could say cleanup and beautify the city. Well, the lockers would help, well, I don't know. It feels like it's really broad, but it also feels like it's pretty narrow. Okay, we brought it narrow to say.
Yeah, we, we, we could, uh, say that, uh, we believe that, so a- after the sentence, "We seek to collaborate with Art and History Commission to support decoration of the lockers," we could just do another sentence right thereafter that says, um, "We believe this would help beautify and clean up the city of Seaside."
It would also encourage.
Yeah, beautify the neighborhood and the city of Seaside. It would help beautify and clean up the neighborhood and the city of Seaside. And then what, what were you saying?
I was gonna say, it would also, go into the third bullet, uh, and it would also encourage citizens to comply with various city codes.
That's great. That is great. We should rate that.
How will it be?
By, by having their stuff not exposed to everybody's eyeballs to see. I'm sure there's a city code.
So my, this sentence is, is getting changed, because you're not trying to say, "We believe this project will benefit all of them," and saying.
Oh.
Right, so you already started, "We believe this project will benefit," so do you wanna add it to this sentence?
Um, a- actually.
We could, we could at the end, but we could say, "And."
Wait, go, go up to after lockers on the one right up, yeah. So we'll, we'll add those two sentences right after lockers and make that kind of our second paragraph, and then we can cut that line, "We believe this project will benefit all community members in Seaside," we can cut that out.
So then, what am I saying after lockers? Is that, we believe?
We believe our project will beautify the neighborhoods and the city of Seaside.
The neighborhoods or the?
Why don't we just say the city of Seaside? Do we use the whole?
Who said we needed to say both?
I don't think it's, 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 I think we just said, I think we need to say the city.
Okay, so it'll beautify the city of Seaside.
Mm-hmm.
And encourage citizens to voluntarily comply.
Are you gonna say citizens or just encourage compliance?
It, it would encourage.
I think, I think, I like, encourage compliance with various city codes.
That, that's, that's great.
Yeah, I think, yeah, well.
It would, with various city codes relating to the general appearance of the city of Seaside.
How about just, maybe just leave it there?
I can do this.
Okay, and then.
And take out this.
The, take out that tagline right below, yep. Take it right out. And I think that's it. How does that look?
Excellent. Oh, I, I make a motion to email this letter to the, the D M E E WIS at Seaside. Oh, I'm sorry, to Dan, I don't know.
Dan Muus.
How do you, Muus?
Muus.
Muus, I, I, I make a motion to email our project proposal to Dan Muus.
A second.
Very well. At this time, we'd like to open it up to public comment, so members of the public that wish to speak on this agenda item uh, may do so for up to three minutes, and for public record, please state your name.
I'm seeing none in council chambers or online.
Uh, very well. Uh, so, all in favor of accepting this draft email to be sent out to the NIC staff liaison, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So I believe we're not done with this agenda item, because isn't there discussion about, uh, having a, a, a dual meeting with them, with the NICs at some point in the future? So, do we wanna do further discussion on that?
I'm gonna make a motion that we, um, move the setting up of the meeting till our next meeting.
Very well. Do I have a second? You have a second? Okay. Um, at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment again, so, uh, the, uh, the motion is to, uh, uh, move the, this agenda, part of the agenda item to our next meeting in March for discussing a collaborative meeting with the NIC. So, members of the public, if you wish to comment on this, uh, you may do so for up to three minutes.
Uh, Chair Strickland, I'm seeing none in council chambers or online.
Uh, very well. All in favor of a discussion of a collaborative meeting with the NIC being moved to our March meeting, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are moving to business item D. Discuss advocacy plan for City of Seaside Homeless Commission to determine and express needs for support regarding impact of homelessness and related challenges on community health, wellness, and safety. Uh, the recommendation is that the commission will identify challenges related to homelessness previously communicated, as well as develop plans for engaging with community members, people with lived experience, business owners, and stakeholders to identify needs for support, resources, and solutions that can be advocated for the city council and community and county partners. So, uh, th- this is a discussion item, and it has come up a lot, like, as far as advocacy, what, what can we do for, for advocacy? Uh, so, uh, I'll open it up to the commissioners that wish to, um, add to this.
Um, so I think in the immediate future, we've been asked by one of the county supervisors to see if we can get Seaside to be part of the Lead Me Home Initiative, right? So it feels like that's something we could advocate for. And then I'm wondering if, as part of the Lead Me Home, my guess is there's gonna be another plan update coming out. Well.
Next year.
Next year. Um, and it would, it would, I would think that there will be opportunities to support advocacy through that work, if we can be part of that, and it, that might be a really nice way to, to learn and to support what the counties are already doing, um, and get behind what's happening, assuming that we agree with what the county's doing. I, I wasn't here for the presentation, so I don't know exactly all of it, but those are just my thoughts.
Sure, yep, and just to note, because it seems like we're kind of already going into the next agenda item, which talks about that, that we can combine the two items now and then, if that's okay with the chair, right?
Yes, so how, how do I make a motion to combine business items D and E together?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, I'll make a motion that we combine business items D and E, uh, together, and just for clar- clarity, business item E is explore Lead Me Home five-year plan update presented by District Four Supervisor Wendy Root Ask You, and discuss plans for Seaside Homeless Commission representative to attend April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five Lead Me Home Summit. And in that, the recommendation is that commissioners will review the five-year Lead Me Home Plan update previously presented by District Four Supervisor to identify concerns, challenges related to homelessness, as well as proposed solutions to communicate to the Seaside Council, to advocate for the city to consider adopting the plan. And commissioner will also choose a representative to attend the Lead Me Home Summit taking place on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, so do I, do I have a second on that?
Yes.
Uh, very well. Um, open it up for public comment.
Sure. Uh, let's see, Chairman, uh, my question is for, uh, I guess the D, matter D. Uh, do we have any partnerships with like the Salvation Army Community Center that's over there, Contra Costa or anything? Because I know they have a lot of services and programs, they have the food banks and everything there as well. I'm not really sure if, of, if this, this committee has anything to do with them or any partnerships or collaborations, so I'm just curious about that.
Sure, I can, uh, fill that question, the city staff. Uh, so, uh, the city's family community support program, which myself and my colleague Denise, um, staff, we actually, our primary functioning is to work in services that are, to help support folks with needs such as the unhoused. And so, the Salvation Army itself is strong community partner, which often we exchange referrals back and forth, as well as we collaborate on, you know, providing services, whether it's us complementing services, um, that they can or can't provide, just depends, uh, but they're well-known, we are known to them, and they engage us quite a bit. And as support to this commission, they're certainly within the, the list of partners that we include. We've actually invited them to previous listening sessions as well, which they have attended and spoke at, um, we provided funding from some of our previous budgets, um, for, uh, for holiday needs. I know one area definitely. Uh, and so yet they're strong partners.
Any other further public comment?
Uh, Chair Strickland, I'm seeing, oh, we do have one in council chambers.
Um, just briefly, um, I do think these are two different agenda items, and, and it does sound like you're more hot for E. Maybe you should just do E first and then come back to the after that. But, that's, instead of combining, because I do see them as two different issues, and I was gonna talk about two different issues. But then if you combine it, it's just one public comment, so, but this is about the.
So I, I do believe that in agenda item, uh, so I wanted to speak to that. I do believe in agenda item D, where it says, discuss, you know, advocacy and determined needs, uh, and regarding the impact of homelessness related to challenges with community health, wellness, and safety. I think all of those topics are in the Lead Me Home Plan, so that, that is why it came up, uh, combining the agenda items, because if, if we choose to adopt the Lead Me Home Plan, we're gonna be going through it, it, it tonight, and it's gonna actually cover a lot of these, uh, points that are in agenda item D, so it, it just seems like it's the economic thing to do, combining both of the agenda items together. Anyhow.
Well, then advocacy can also be beyond just the Lead Me Home.
That's correct.
As well. So I mean, you know, I, I can see it both ways. I only brought it up only because it was an immediate, it feels like an immediate thing to advocate for that. That doesn't mean that there are other things to advocate for.
Correct.
And to, to plan, um, so I mean, it could be that we opt to speak about advocacy tonight as it relates to the Lead Me Home Plan and table advocacy generally to a future meeting, unless there is a need to discuss that tonight. Just an option.
Okay, um, so the motion on the table is to, uh, combine, uh, both agenda items D and E, so I, I guess.
So it's the will of the commission, but should always consider public comment, right?
Right.
Well, could we just change the motion to include advocacy for the Lead Me Home Plan for tonight? With the idea that we can expand and continue advocacy planning in general for the commission?
Um, can, can I just amend the motion to do that?
So not hospital, and then postpone the other discussion.
So, you know, I, I think at this point, because it, you know, it sounds like there's, there's, on this, there is a desire from the public to want to wish to comment on, on a separate, separate thing beyond the Lead Me Home Plan, that maybe we should just keep them separate. I just, it was, uh, that was initially brought up, so it just sounded like there was something that could be combined, but.
Okay.
You know.
I'll, I'll withdraw my motion to combine both, uh, business items, so we'll go back to business item D, and we're discussing advocacy now.
Sure.
So, um, we're looking at needs related to community members, just a general population within the city of Seaside, needs with people with lived experience, needs from business owners, and stakeholders. Uh, so as far as stakeholder, stakeholders, that's our commission. It would be the Coalition of Homeless Service Providers, um, any of the many organizations that we've, uh, given holiday or food insecurity funds to, uh, faith groups or nonprofits, so those are all the stakeholders.
City, the city council leadership, although I did say advocated to the city council.
And, and it's not just, in, in here, it says, "Community and county partners," so that, that would be, uh, other city councils and, you know, the peninsula.
Yep.
Uh, so it expands. There's, there's a lot of stakeholders. Um, community members, and anyone that comes in, in these chambers or any of the chambers when, when topics related to homelessness either, uh, come up. And then business owners, what their needs are, um, and, and the, the needs, they, they could be different, um, and I've brought this up, uh, at commission meetings before. Um, I like that we have a humanitarian aspect to this. How, how can we, um, help those who need it most in the community? But sometimes you're gonna hear from members of the community where they, they feel like, you know, there could be homeless individuals causing a nuisance by their business, so you, you have to listen to everyone from the community. And the, the most important one, I, I think, is, you know, the people with lived experience. Uh, we've had people come in these chambers, um, who've shared their lived experience, and at our listening sessions who've shared their lived experience. And I remember hearing from the listening sessions that it was the number one need, uh, that was important, was housing. So, um, I, I'd like to open it up for commissioners, what their thoughts are, so how would we go forward, um, as far as advocacy is concerned?
And did you have thought?
Well, I, I'm not clear what, who, who we're advocating to with this.
Uh, city council.
Advocacy plan to the city council, would that mean?
And community current partners, it's, it's.
Okay, so would our advocacy plan be for the city, uh, council to attend city council meetings? Well, all three of us can, because that's a.
Right.
So for somebody. I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what this is asking us to do. I feel like.
I, yeah, I have an idea, right? This is about discussing a plan, right, which doesn't, it doesn't say you have to develop. Hold on, it doesn't say you have to develop it, yeah, and so, here's an idea, is, I don't think we're done just from the couple. Three, we did three. Three listening sessions, right, and times are slightly different even than just when they were, when we held those listening sessions. So I think in trying to develop a plan, one of the best ways to do that is to get the input, you know, from the different groups, right, that, that we would be even developing this plan and advocating for, and so my proposal is maybe consider holding another listening session, where it, the purpose of the listening session is to literally come out of it and say, "We have." we have a plan that we wish to put out there with three items or two items or whatever. These are significant things that came out. Because the difference with that I see is what actions did we take from our previous listening sessions? Right? As we got a lot of information, we can use some of what we gathered from there and helping develop the plan. But I think also having a focused listening session where that's the idea, you know, is, it's just a thought, but.
So this is my question. So we've had, what was it, four? Did we have four total listening sessions?
I think we did three.
Three? Okay, was there any one we had not, so as far as this category, because we, some of these listening sessions kind of had targeted. I think one was housing and then one was nonprofits and what was the third one? Was it, oh, didn't we sort of do one here with first responders? It was kind of like a half-listening session? So we've heard from first responders, we've heard from nonprofits, folks with lived experience, and I don't recall what was the other topic of the other listening session?
Is that just faith-based?
Faith-based? So is there anyone we haven't, did we have a listening session specifically hearing from business owners?
Nope.
Okay, so.
We've had a few individuals come and share, you know, their concerns in previous meetings, but.
Because I do believe that we've had a lot of input from all these other organizations. Maybe we could do due diligence and review what we heard. And I know, I do know that things are different now than they were a year ago. And I don't want to presume to assume that, oh, they're going to want the same things, their input's going to be the same. Because I know it's not. I just don't want to hold the listening session again and if we didn't heed, you know, everything that, you know, we were asked. Like I wouldn't want to hold one again and go back and say, well, this is what we haven't like done yet, you know? Like what can we still be doing or start doing now that we've already heard from the listening sessions? I think maybe we just need to review that. But I am open to holding a listening session specifically for business owners. Because that's a group that we haven't heard feedback from yet. But I, we have heard feedback from a lot of these other groups.
So then, which is fine, then I think the thing would have to be then, I would need any notes from the commissioners, you know, from the previous listening sessions, from when the officer, the first responder spoke. And then I can compile it and then I'd have to bring it back then for a future meeting for us to then explore. Because I don't have all the notes in front of me. And I'm sure there are notes commissioners have that I don't have, that they collected from those different sessions and whatnot.
And as far as dispersment of these notes, is this something where if the notes get compiled, we would have to look at it together at a future meeting? It's not something that can be emailed to us? Like what are the rules with that?
Well, I mean, when I send out the agenda prior to the meeting, it'll be in the agenda packet that commissioners will receive to be able to review right before the meeting. But then I'll also have it as I usually do at the meeting. We'll have it, you know, posted, you know, on the screen and we can look it over and everything.
Okay. I believe that it would be, it would be good for us if we reviewed those notes and maybe revisited this before calling for another listening session.
Okay, so then with that, if, you know, what then would need to happen is each commissioner would have to, from their notes, just put something together to send to me. And then I'll compile everything for next agenda packet.
Okay.
And so the goal would be to try to isolate one or two things that we would want to advocate for?
I think so, because I'm pretty sure the list will be hefty. It's, you know, maybe prioritizing some, you know, instead of saying we're going to try to tackle the whole list, maybe.
Or we can't.
Yeah. Right?
But to be honest, that's one of the reasons why I thought, thinking about the planning that counties are already doing, and how does that fit into what we're already. Because to me, the best advocacy, best advocacy is when you are really tight on your message and you know exactly what you want to try to convince people that we need or should get or not. And I mean, right now, I feel like we're all at a place since we really have to figure out how do we get to a more narrow, what are those more two things that we can work in?
So that's why I think it's best to get everybody notes. Because what will happen too is I'm sure when I get everyone's notes, there are going to be things that are the same on each one of yours. Or, you know, and so it may even help narrow it down anyways, right? Because there'll be repeats on, you know, the different commissioner notes. I mean, if you have another idea, that's okay. That's just my suggestion.
Well, for this advocacy plan, I don't, I don't, we're not covered in our vision this tonight. I certainly hope not. I think having a running list of projects, you know, of things to advocate for that we can all look at, I think would be great. I love that idea and I am going to, when I was listening, the one thing that really stood out for me, of course, we need more housing. Of course, what needs to be affordable. And there's a whole lot of. But one of the things that really stood out for me was when the fire and police were here and we asked them, you know, what do we need? And it was emergency shelter and whether, you know, I think we could work with the city. Does the city have a, does that mean a building? That people can go into when the weather's bad and pitch their tent? Is it a tent parking lot, a place where people could pitch their tent in bad weather? I don't know what that looks like. Is it the city renting one of those big tents and putting it on the lawn? So like, I don't know what that is, but that to me would be like something we could advocate for. That, when listening to this. And then the other thing I thought about when Ben was talking about our listening sessions is, and that was really, it was unfortunate you couldn't be here last session because we all learned, at least I think it was new for all of us, about a group called Stepping Stone, who provides all this food at no cost to all these groups. Well, they're not working with Password Ministry because Password Ministry has never asked them for food. Well, maybe we can, you know, that's one example. And maybe we can have, using the other information from that last meeting was a mingler, where we can get just these organizations together so they can figure out how they can help each other. And maybe we can advocate for them to help them, since we don't have a big budget, but we have a great space, we've got, you know, great, we can sit here, the old, whatever. We've got great opportunity there. And maybe it's not so much of a listening session other than how can we, you know, help your groups help each other? And the first thing that came to mind was Stepping Stone. Wow, you know, here they're getting all this food that's going to the dumpster from Safeway or maybe other stores. And but they can't hold that food forever either. It needs to be eaten and maybe Casa Noche Buena could use more food. Or because if they could get food from here, that frees that budget somewhere else. And maybe, maybe that could be something, I don't know if you'd call that an advocacy plan, to help these groups help each other? Yeah, those were the things that came to mind for me on the advocacy plan, plan. But this is a plan I could come up with. Having a list of things we want, you know, like our dream list, like what is the list? What's the list? I don't know what the list is.
The other thing that came out of, the other thing that came out of listening sessions, I think, was an opportunity for folks to talk to first responders, right? I think there was a lot of concerns raised, a lot of the things we have. And it might be an opportunity to kind of open up, I don't know, maybe open to that, but have a conversation. Come to a meeting and we'll have people ask questions, why does this happen? Why are we sweeping, right, and those kinds of things? How can we mitigate that? So I don't know, just ideas. But it sounds like we'll start with our notes. I love the mingling idea, making connections.
Me too.
Definitely focus on that. And that could be advocacy. Advocacy doesn't have to be anything. We use the word advocate for the Leave Me Home, right? So again, it's, we can decide what it is we want to advocate for.
So I make a motion to put an agenda item on, a future agenda, to set up a mingler, could also be a show of appreciation for the groups that we've, you know, worked with, the vet group, the Casa, Stepping Stone, Pass the Word, I Help, you know, all these groups we've worked with. Let's get them together and that's my motion, that we'll put that on a future agenda, put that down and.
I'll second that. So I'm not sure, so Derek, so for clarity, this is a motion for putting a, I guess, a mingler, discussion or planning of a, like a mingler with stakeholders on a future agenda item, so that, would that be next month's?
Just future, could be next month, could be April and.
Okay.
I don't know how full next month's agenda is.
I kind of like to put a date or, you know, decide this future meeting could be now.
Okay, March, right.
Right.
For the next meeting, March meeting.
The, I was going to bring it up during reports from staff, but that's fine because it's related to next month's agenda and the length and adding as that or not. And so next month, one of our biggest needs is to discuss the work plan and get that.
Done.
Done, right?
Okay.
Because it's due April first, I think we could probably get it till our meeting in April where we'd have to prove it anyways. Because if March is when we, you know, review it and then you tell me what changes to make, then I would bring it back, that first meeting in April there, and then we vote to prove it that day. So next month in March, right? So next month in March though is a significant work of exploring the actual work plan, making any, deciding on what changes to make. And then after we vote and say we want to go with those changes, I take the plan back. Obviously, I make the changes and then we would vote to approve it at our April meeting.
Okay.
With the changes, yeah.
So then my motion would be to, for the April.
April, yeah, that sounds.
To finalize an appreciation mingler or, I'm trying to start wording, a mingler for our, what do we call our organizations we work with?
Give me, I just call them counters, right?
Our community partners.
Community and county partners.
Okay.
On the April, my motion is on the April agenda to have an item to establish the mingler for our community and county partners.
Very well, so your motion's amended. Okay, so Derek, I did have a question before I opened it up for public comment. So this, what we're voting on, are we still, do we still need to do further discussion on Agenda Item D related to reviewing notes from the listening sessions? So we're basically, after we have a vote on what's the vote, the motion right now, we're still working on Agenda Item D, we're not going to E, right?
So I don't know if it requires a motion because this was a discussion item, not necessarily an action item.
Okay.
But because there is an action related to it, which is you're going to be providing me the notes, I'm going to compile them and then we're going to review at our next meeting. That should be a motion.
Okay, so we can do that after this. Okay, so the motion on the table is for discussing a, holding a mingler at our future April regular meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so members of the public that wish to comment on the motion, you may do so at this time for up to three minutes.
I like the idea of a mingler. West Side, San Francisco County Homeless Chairman, lead community member, so lived experience on this D. That's a big deal, you know, the people directly impacted, I suppose. You're going to have to figure out, are you advocating for people to have a permanent place to be 24 hours a day? Or do they need to move around and carry everything that they can carry and lose the rest? Because that's about what's happening. My co-president, Rita Acosta, actually made a book and this illustrates how a community came together, over forty people in Chinatown and they formed their own community. They signed a contract with rules, you know, it's a rules for encampment. And they basically were in charge of, you know, maintaining law and order. And, you know, they had a curfew, they actually had the first porta potty to come to Chinatown. And, you know, I mean, they worked really hard to do it by themselves. And this is the cheapest, easiest way to do this. This is actually what happened during shelter in place, Colonel Durham. There was a bunch of RVs and vehicles at Robert's Lake. They said, get them out of there. This is during shelter in place, COVID, during like whatever April, May. We were able to switch over to June to be in at Colonel Durham because we forced a special city council meeting. And, you know, I mean, there was a lot of resistance out there, you know? There were protesters, people that were losing their rent. So house people actually stuck up for us, which kind of triggered a lot of that. Jason Campbell was quite a hero for that. And it saved lives, you know? I mean, there's thirty people, forty people that were relocated from Robert's Lake to Colonel Durham. They were able to stay there throughout the duration of California being closed, but the day it reopened, you got to get out of here, we're going to tow your stuff. And, I mean, where did our humanity, where did our compassion, where did that fruition of service go? Did we really mean what we said? Or are we just picking on people because we're bigger than you? So there's got to be somewhere that people belong 24 hours a day. The health and safety, whose health, whose safety? Because if we're dragging people out, we're not considering their health and safety because rain, elements, sick, and attitude. I mean, you're killing people spiritually, physically and emotionally every time, every time you take everything they got. So, I mean, the advocacy is where did they belong 24 hours a day? That's going to solve it. If we just do a piece meal, we'll give you food, we'll give you clothes, but cities can come and take it all away. We're making ourselves feel better, but everybody else is suffering for that. And a lot of people are getting paid. You want to talk about mismanagement of funds, it's so cheap and so easy. Just allow people some personal space where they can be, make tiny homes out of it, paint it however you want to and make it blend in. But that's, it's, people got to be somewhere. And people can do it themselves, they want to do it themselves, just give them the opportunity to do so. I'll leave these books for you.
Thank you. So is there any other public comment on this motion at the time? Thank you.
Chair Strickland, I'm seeing on in chambers or online?
Very well, so all in favor, say aye. Aye?
I'm sorry, what are we in the?
This is for the mingler.
The mingler, moving to the, we're going to revisit it at the April meeting.
Okay, because I've had another motion for item D two.
Oh, that's okay.
Separate motion.
You can make multiple, but one at a time.
All right, so all in favor of the discussion of the mingler in April regular meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
I would like to make a motion for us to send our notes to Derek to compile a list, a project list. Whether it's, you know, just, what's the list? That's, my motion is to have a list of things that we, you know.
An advocacy list?
An advocacy list.
So the motion is.
To compile an advocacy list.
Will send their notes from the listening sessions to city staff to compile and for the development of a advocacy list.
Yes, that's the motion.
I'll second that motion. And I'd like to open it up for public comment.
Okay, I went off on one tangent before and now this is the other. Monterey County Homeless Service Director, actually, has been advocating for, and that's part of what we need to throw in there. The USICH has a 19-point principle plan that also helps to mitigate issues for health and safety. So that it's not blight, it's just tending ground. And, you know, running water, electricity, and, you know, 24-hour support. But allowing people to be in a pan, basically decency, dignity, and dominion over their own life, especially their own possessions, is very difficult if you have to constantly be driven on. So the 19-point principle toward mitigating blight issues and some minimal health and safety standards. And that's, like I said, just basically tending ground. Pee poo, trash and food in its place, which goes back to porta potties or running water, toilets, showers, laundry. You know, if it's in your house, that's gonna be an element of what's needed for hygiene if health and safety is really our concern. So, and a permanent place to be 24 hours a day. That way, we can free up our police to take higher priority calls, you know? I mean, these are our relatives, these are our friends, our neighbors, people we've known that have lived here all their life. They expect to die here, just not this early in life. And we could be supportive if they just had a place to be. Where can they go?
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time?
Chair Strickland, seen on in chambers or online?
Very well, so all in favor of commissioners sending their notes to city staff to compile an advocacy list, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so are we complete with business item D now?
Yes, for.
Okay, so we'll move on to business item E. Let's check this off. Explore the Lead Me Home five-year plan update presented by District Four Supervisor Wendy Root Askew and discuss plans for Seaside Homeless Commission representative to attend the April 17th, 2025 Lead Me Homes Summit. Recommendation is commissioners will review the five-year Lead Me Home Plan previously presented by District Four Supervisor to identify concerns and challenges related to homelessness as well as proposed solutions to communicate to Seaside City Council to advocate for the city to consider adopting the plan. Commissioner will also choose a representative to attend the Lead Me Homes Summit. Okay, so I see, I believe, three things in here, maybe four. So one is, one commissioner to the summit. There's also getting the Seaside Council to adopt the plan. And I believe the next one is our commission to adopt the plan. Am I missing anything? Are we having online issues? Okay.
Yeah, in this case, we, she's just gotta take thorough notes. Unfortunately, just the recording will have stopped midway, but.
Is it because of internet?
It says it's internet issue, so it's not on our, it's not on your end. Denise and I haven't, you know, messed with anything. And so I'm not sure if it's because of the weather or, you know, something else citywide.
Could be the murder of crows outside.
Yeah, right. One of them got, chewed on a wire or something.
So should we just continue business as normal?
Yes, and it's basically Denise will take, you know, Kobe's notes and we'll just have to go from there, right? It's kind of like in the past when we had, when we randomly had to have a meeting before they said all meetings have to be here in another location and we didn't have access to the, you know, the city. So it's, we've been here before.
Okay.
Well, I. Should we make a motion to move this to the next meeting? So Denise doesn't have to take so many notes? We could choose the commissioner at the April, sorry, the March first meeting. And I could check my calendar.
March 5th, 5th, it's one month exactly, I think.
Yeah, I met the first meeting, meeting in March.
We got you.
I would have to take the day off work in order to attend this meeting. And I need to look at my calendar and probably be more accurate, closer. I might not even be able to commit to the April meeting to the 17th. You know, that I could be away on the 17th.
Okay.
I was gonna ask, I mean, so Wendy came to our meeting. We had, has, has one of the commissioners gone to the city council in the past to ask?
Sorry?
Has a commissioner gone to city council to ask them to support the plan?
I haven't.
I'm not, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Commissioner meeting, so the county commissioner.
I'm not sure, right? You know, the plan was adopted prior to the start of my program and to me becoming a staff liaison. So I was never given the history of if it was ever proposed or why it was or not adopted. I was just, I, it was just reached out with the, with at least the information of the city hasn't adopted it yet. And that the supervisor wants us currently to try to help encourage it.
So would one idea be to kind of investigate, like what's, what the history is and why the city maybe has not adopted it? Or maybe it's just a miss and it's just a procedural kind of thing? I mean, I don't have, I'm guessing. Would that be, I'm trying to figure out, like, how do we, how do we, how do we know what it is we should do? We don't know what the past has held us.
I think in this case, what I can do is I'll reach out to the city clerk and then see if the city clerk can discover some history. And hopefully, you know, can get the feedback to know how to best communicate that to the commission.
Yeah, because I don't know how we would advocate for something.
If we don't know the history, things, sure, I understand.
Especially if there's a reason why the city has opted not to participate.
Sure.
Again, maybe this is just procedural or something weird or something. And then I would say the other, the other idea is for everybody to look at their calendars and then come back to the next meeting and say if they're able to go. Is this one of those things where we all, I mean, I heard somebody talking earlier that there should not be an issue if everybody wanted to go?
I mean, technically, no, as long as you stayed away from each other and all of that.
Well, isn't it, it's gonna be on Zoom though also, right? Or is it only on Zoom?
It's not a Zoom thing.
The Lead Me Home?
No, it's an in-person event, yeah. When I went, so literally when I, because I went last year as well, it's, it was multiple rooms that had different topics related to, you know, housing and homelessness and all of that. And you, you know, you can kind of choose which one you wanted to attend. And you receive the information as well as Q and A. Obviously, a lot of networking going on just amongst the attendees themselves. There is a kind of primary initial introduction opening from, you know, the coalition, the CLC folks. And then you can kind of branch off to different breakouts. And it is, it takes place over the course of like a regular workday.
Okay.
So those are my two ideas and two separate motions.
Well, one of my ideas, so we have in our packet is it's the whole Lead Me Home Plan, which can be found online. One of the motions I thought of was we could discuss that we could incorporate somewhere in our work plan that were in support of the Lead Me Home Plan. And anything that aligns with what we do, we can work towards it. But there is a lot of stuff in the Lead Me Home Plan that involves housing. And I know we advocate for housing, but I'm not sure what we have been able to do to like make housing happen as our small body, but we were in support of that. So I thought we could start by saying, hey, we support the Lead Me Home Plan. We're recognizing it in our work plan. Anything that is the same in our work plan and Lead Me Home, we can acknowledge. If not, if there's something we can do, we can focus on that also. But I think that if we accept it in some formal way ourselves as a commission, that has more weight if we make a recommendation to the council to accept it, the city to accept it. So that, that's my thoughts.
I don't know the ramifications of accepting the plan.
Right, I don't.
Is that committing city funds?
Right, so I don't think we could just.
I, that's where staff, we need information from staff.
Right, so the whole thing around needing it to be advocated and proposed to city council is this is not a plan that we can just decide just to adopt on our own and have it be something that drives our work, right? The city has to have its, that's why it's at the level where it needs to be advocated for to the city. And so I would not suggest us making a comment that says, oh, we're adopting a plan, because again, too, we don't know the history and we don't wanna give the appearance like we're going against the wishes of the city, right? I'm sure there are elements in it, just like our work plan, that speak to the same thing, of course, because it's housing homeless, right? All, right, in general, right? So there's gonna be things in it that speak similarly to our work plan. But I want to, just, you know, for, you know, covering ourselves, not do something that, you know, is against the city's wishes or desires.
Right, and, but, so how would we go forward? Would we, should someone make a motion to check with the city or get more feedback from city staff regarding the history of Lead Me Home?
And so I can already tell you, there'll be multiple motions within this, right? Because we have to have the one for representative, two, right? But this is just in terms of exploring around, how do we advocate for the city to consider adopting it, right?
Okay.
And so per Vice Chair Mugen, the suggestion, I can go back and try to discover the history from the city as it relates to the plan to be able to best inform the commission on how to move forward.
Okay. Do we, do we have a motion?
Do we need a motion to ask for staff to acquire, to collect more information and history on that? Is that what it's for? The city's history with the Lead Me Homes Plan? I'm gonna start with the motion I know. I make a motion for us to put on the, the March. Do we want to do March, do we want to do April for the choosing a representative?
A quick question, point of, or for informational purposes, Derek. The Lead Me Homes Summit, is this something we need to RSVP to? Like if we don't RSVP at a sooner date, we won't get a ticket there or we can't?
Yeah, so do you remember, by March 1st is the deadline. So there is a registration link on the Coalition of Homeless Service Providers website, which I can forward that page to y'all.
Well, I don't think, I mean, we're not, it sounds like it's okay. If everybody wanted to go, they can go. So if you want to go, register so that in March's meeting, we can just acknowledge who's planning to attend or who's registered, knowing that sometimes things happen.
So I, it's listed as an item that has to be decided upon because it's on the agenda now.
Choosing a representative.
Yeah, sorry, but.
I think we should choose.
And I just, again, with for messiness purposes and all of that, it was, I just thought, yeah, and I'm going to. So there's still gonna be two technically representatives for the commission, even though I'm going to city staff, right? I'm still receiving the information. And so, and of course, I'm gonna share anything that is important or whatnot with this commission.
So would the motion be that where somebody from this commission is also attending, but then others could potentially go as well if they opted to go? I mean, is that, I guess I'm not sure. Like if we say one person's going, that doesn't preclude others from going, does it? As long as we all talk to each other?
Yeah, just no, no appearance of there being any issues with the Brown Act. Because who said that we could all attend? Was that, because when we told that, all of us could go to it?
I was just throwing out there, but in public comment. That wasn't a.
It wasn't a directive.
It wasn't a directive from anyone in particular.
So do we, do we have to actually choose someone right now or?
You can make a motion to say, you know, I thought it was, the motion was to propose to check schedules and then come back at the March meeting.
I'm gonna have to register by March 1st.
You have to register March 1st, so.
So we can all register, we can all register if they want to. I know he's canceled the registers.
I would say at this point, just, I would say select a representative. If then, outside of this, you decide to also register, it's unknown to us, right? You know, just following what this says here. But keeping in mind, you don't wanna get yourselves caught up in any kind of situation with the appearance that it's a gathering of quorum.
Okay.
And remember, with just two of you, that is a quorum right now.
Right, okay. But.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If next month, we have more people appointed to the board, technically, so if we just get one more person appointed, we have a body of four, quorum is then three, right? Because quorum is 50% plus one.
Yes, that's true.
Two commissioners is 50%.
Yeah.
So.
Well, also with the problem, as long as you guys are not sitting next to each other or talking about the commission, you guys are good.
Okay, we'll just sit at the office and quarters. We won't break out in the same breakout purse.
As of the moment, right, without knowing the future, because agendas aren't made to try to say we know what the future will hold technically, right? We gotta go off as if you have three commissioners right now. So you're choosing a representative.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say right now, what were the hours again, Derek?
It's like a regular workday.
Like nine, nine to five.
Nine to five, something like that.
I am not gonna be.
Nine to four, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna be able to do that.
So that helps anyway, that narrows it down.
I'm gonna make a motion for Vice Chair Mugen to attend the Lead Me Homes Summit on April 17th.
I'll second that.
And I need to check my calendar, like I don't know if I can actually go. I'm happy to do that, but I.
I'm just saying, just, let's just knock this, we'll be here forever if we don't assign somebody to this.
Can we amend the motion that says we're choosing Vice Chair Mugen?
But there's an alternative.
As an alternative, Commissioner Cunningham would want to step in?
Yes, yes.
Do you wish to amend the motion?
Yes, I wish to amend the motion that the primary person will be, the primary representative will be Vice Chair Mugen.
And the alternate?
The alternate would be Linda Cunningham to attend the Lead Me Homes Summit on April 17th.
Very well, so now I'll open it up to public comment. Members of the public that wish to comment on a Lead Me Homes representative for their summit. You have three minutes to do so. For public record, please state your name.
There's no members in council chamber, and since we're not online.
Right, there's nobody there, okay. Right, there's nobody there, okay. Um, all in favor of, uh, Vice Chair Mugen being the representative of Leave Me Home with Commissioner Cunningham as the alternate? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Your internet might be back, it looks like it's back from my phone.
Yeah, but we.
Oh, you're on a different, yeah.
Well, click that and see if it'll just automatically sign you, uh, no, it won't. See, we don't have the login for our city.
Right.
Right, they would have to, the city clerk has to log in first before making.
No problem.
Okay, so to continue on, um, so that that was the, uh, the representative to Leave Me Home. The next thing is we need, uh, for staff to. Um, ex- explore the background of the the Leave Me Home Plan and its relation to City of Seaside and. Why it hasn't happened yet, and next steps for us as a commission to advocate for the Leave Me Home Plan.
Yep.
Go for it, make a motion.
Oh, I thought that was the motion.
Oh, I didn't make a motion.
Oh, okay, I will, I will make a, um. Gosh, I forgot it, you did, it was so good.
All right.
I make a motion for city staff to.
Investigate.
Investigate the history of the City of Seaside and the Leave Me Home Plan. And report back to us on what is found.
Sure, that's fine.
I'll second that. And, uh, let's open it up again for public comment. So members of the public that wish to comment on, uh, researching the city and the relationship with the Leave Me Home Plan. Um, and next steps for advocating for the Leave Me Home Plan. Um, you have three minutes to make public comment, and for public record, please state your name.
Hi, uh, Wes Wise, this is Monterey County Home and Service Union. Um, in my opinion, I guess, I'll give you a little bit of reasoning for the Leave Me Home Plan. Um, it it's actually like a couple of ten-year plans turned into a five-year plan in twenty-twenty-one. So five years is up in twenty-twenty-six, and, you know, worst of progress. Um, but, you know, it kind of goes back to the U S I C H nineteen-point principle. What they really want, for the Monterey County wants, is not for your problem to end up being their problem. Or any other jurisdictions' problems to end up being a different jurisdictions' problem, because, you know, just push them over the city limit, and now it's somebody here, another jurisdictions' problem. Um, so that's kind of what what they're trying to do is is get everyone going in the same direction of like shelter-in-place days. Uh, mitigating issue and and allowing people to be somewhere, anywhere, uh, twenty-four hours a day and and not rassam now, just just letting be there, because. Invariably, whatever jurisdiction is doing is pushing them right beyond city limits. And then it becomes somebody else's problem, and of course, the county will end up with most of that responsibility. So, and and so Katrina McKenzie would be a good resource, um, she's the Coalition of Home and Service Providers Executive Director. Uh, for, you know, why, why join the the Leave Me Home Plan, as well as Roxanne Wilson, uh, Home and Services Director with Monterey County. And those would be very good leads.
Thank you. Anyone else? And no one online?
No one on online, uh, but, uh, yeah, there's no one else in council chambers.
Okay, very well, uh, so. All in favor of, uh, uh, city staff investigating history of the Leave Me Home Plan and next steps for advocacy of said plan? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So are are we complete on event, agenda item E now? Okay, agenda item F. Uh, discuss process of designing, approving, and commissioning name tags for commissioners and staff for the creation. And for the creation of a challenge coin to support community engagement activities. So the recommendation is that commissioners will explore designs for creating name tags to help identify member, uh, members while interacting in the community. And the design of a challenge coin to encourage and reinforce efforts from partners and stakeholders. To actively engage in addressing the needs of homeless individuals and families in the Seaside community. So, this was an agenda item that, um, I wanted to put on the agenda myself. But, um, because we're kind of in this limbo of exploring feasibility and process of a name change. Um, I could tell you that these, uh, name tags and challenge coins, they would have said Seaside Homeless Commission on them. And I'm thinking, what's the point of getting these things made if we're just gonna change the name of the commission? So I'd like to table this item, if that's okay with everybody.
That sounds great.
Uh, so I'll I'll make a motion to table agenda item F, we're, we're, one second. The, the name change, that's for, that was tabled for March, correct? And.
Well, I could have to do the work plan, has to go to April, yeah.
Okay, I'll table this to April. So, uh, to, I'd like to, the motion is to table agenda item F for process of approving commissioning, commissioner name tags and challenge coins. To table it to our regular April meeting.
Second that.
Um, members of the public that wish to comment on this agenda item may do so for up to three minutes, and for public record, please state your name.
Uh, they're not in council chambers, church.
Very well. All in favor of tabling agenda item F for the April regular meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Reports from commissioners, Commissioner Cunningham, anything to report tonight?
I hope to attend the Seaside Community Resource Fair.
In May.
In May, yeah.
Because you're the outside.
There's a flyer in the back of your package.
You guys are gonna be outside.
Hmm?
Outside at the Lipton Grand Park, is that where?
Yeah, in May, yeah.
May, well, you might.
We have four seasons every day.
I hope so, right, you never know, right? We have had a period where it's been sunny and then.
Crazy.
By halfway through, cloudy, overcast.
It's May seventeen, it's a day.
That's a Saturday.
Okay.
Um, uh, Commissioner Mugen, anything to report? Okay, um, I I don't have any, any additional things to report at this time. Any other reports from staff?
Hey, that's me, all right, so, uh, thank you so, so very much, Commissioner Cunningham, for plugging our resource fair. So commissioners, you did receive in the back of your packets a copy of the flyer, on one side is English, the other side is Spanish. You're welcome to share out, you know, as you deem appropriate, within the community and 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 related providers, you name it, um, to attend. Um, it will be, uh, primarily a resource fair networking event, of course, there'll be a little bit of entertainment, some free food. But mostly, it's to bring community and partners together. Um, and they get to learn about what each other's do, what services are out there for those that need, possibly. Um, and feedback I've gotten definitely from partners is, wow. We, and I tend to get this from a lot of our, like, resource fairs and whatnot, opportunities to network, is. They learn about what other organizations do, that they thought they understood what their, you know, services were, and they're like, oh, you do that also? Hey, that could, you know, complement or supplement something that we're doing. And so that opportunity then now created a partnership, you know, amongst partners that wasn't there previously. So, it's definitely a, uh, great events, you know, uh, on average, we can get, we usually get, you know, thirty-five to forty partners. Resource tabling, we had, I think, thirty-five last, last year, so, um, you know, it's well attended.
That's great.
Um, so that's the, that's the first thing. Second thing, as I had mentioned earlier, and we, so we kind of have a plan already, is we do need to do our work plan for the next fiscal year. Which is usually due by April first, so we'll discuss it in the March meeting. Oh, uh, and then as it relates to kind of our work, actually, and wanting to bring more services, supports, programming to Seaside. Downtown, Downtown Streets team reached out to me directly, and they want to have a, just a collaborative meeting, so that we can discuss how they can bring a lot of what they're doing in Salinas. To the the Monterey Peninsula region, because apparently they're not really operating along the the peninsula here. Um, which is surprising, um, but, uh, they want to expand what they do, and they do a lot of outreach, especially in case management, as it relates. You know, to folks, um, who are unhoused.
Should we set a time for them to come here?
We can, so I'm gonna meet with them first, because they reached out to me in my city staff hat. And so I'll meet with them first, but then I will, I'm just definitely gonna say, hey, by the way, I'm connected to the city's homeless commission, and I think that would definitely be a body that. I want to connect, you know, the two, so, yeah.
Didn't they come to listen to us?
They did, yes, mm-hmm, they tabled that one of them, so, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, um, we're planned out, so, okay, and then the final announcement, which is kind of an, uh, yeah, exciting, right? Drum roll, please, so if you might have noticed, there was a woman sitting in the meeting for a little while, um, and then she left. She tried to join online, poor thing, and then it dropped her out. She was, she's approved as a commissioner now for the homeless commission. Tomorrow at the city council meeting, she gets declared or announced, and so then by the March, uh, meeting, we will have an additional commissioner. Kathy.
Kathy. That's where those name tags are coming in.
And then I know, just, there's been interest expressed by other folks in, from the public sitting in chambers right now, uh, possibly, and so, uh.
That's exciting.
I think we're on, we're heading in the right direction, you know, in twenty-twenty-five, right, starting off, you know, so, uh. That's, it's all exciting stuff that I have to report.
Yay.
Very, very well, so.
End this meeting.
Uh, do you have a motion to adjourn?
You have a motion to adjourn. I will second.
All right, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, folks.